Mr. Chair, I have seven o'clock. Be free to call the meeting to order.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. We'll start off with roll call.
Jessica Steinhardt.
April Seaworth.
David Schwartz.
Chris Gombiasky.
Brandon Wambum.
Adam Wallace.
Gail London.
And motion for approval of the addition.
So moved.
Give a second?
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Post? Okay, thank you. And approval of the minutes from October 27, 2025.
A motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Post? Okay. All right. And matter of site plan review for the addition at 13332 Ludlow. And yeah, I'm assuming you're the, yes? Do you want to briefly talk about the project?
Sure, sure. My name is Zach Ostroff and I did the, worked on the plans. And I have the homeowner, David Ellenberg, next to me. So yeah, there's two components to the project. One is if you look at machine A3, the front porch, essentially David wanted to update his house, it's kind of a dated look. So we're trying to refresh the front facade as well as the rest of the house. So he's got existing around the house, he's got aluminum siding. And we're going to take that off, we're proposing to take that off and add like a fibrous amount of hardy plank siding around. And he's got a very small porch right now, it's maybe five, about six by 20 that goes about half the width of the house. We're proposing to extend that across the whole facade and, you know, make it covered with a metal roof to kind of add some character to it. That's the first part. The second part is basically going over the back of the house. The back of the house does not have living space over the family room and we're proposing to put a master suite over that. And the same thing, we're going to, we're planning on kicking off the aluminum siding, trying to keep up the architecture of the house without creating any weird roof lines or anything like that. We're trimming around the windows to kind of contrast the color from the siding. And that's essentially it.
Hank, do you think?
Yes, if you would, my name is Mr. Chair. I'd just like to go over some of the characteristics of the addition and point out that it does in fact need a variance. What we're looking at is a site plan approval for an addition, the house located at 13332 Ludlow. Again, the zoning is R1D, plan a lot total of 50 by 130 equals 6,500 square feet. The height is proposed at 26, that's fine. Front yard proposed at 313, that's fine, he only needs 25. The side yards are required in five, total 14, and 4.7 one side and 14.9 total is what is being offered for this. The difference is that those are existing already. So they're existing non-conforming, you can go straight up, straight back according to the zoning ordinance. So that would not need a variance for that. There is a cantilever in the front, which is still way beyond what you need, this quarter's 25, and their 31.3, so they have plenty of room on that. The rear yard is 5205 and that's existing, no change. Lot coverage at 27.7 is existing, no change with the exception of the cantilever. So you do count those, but that's also coming with the porch roof in the front. So all of that is the same. That is not existing, so I want to point that out. The house size, the maximum permitted is 2442 square feet and they're proposing 2732. So the required variance is just under 300 square feet at 290. So what happens is is that they have the 50 by 130 lot, they have 6,500 square feet, the house sits as proposed at 2763, the east neighbor is 1797, the west neighbor is 1522. So this will be bigger than what's in the neighborhood by the two, but they could have 25 plus the lot bonus if they qualified for all the bonuses, which they did not. Again, they're altering the style of the house, so it will be a colonial, two-story. The houses on either side, one is a colonial, the other is a Cape Cod. Brick is the material for this one, I'm sorry, for the west neighbor. This addition is sided, but it is a now combination of brick and sided house. Should this go through, the siding will be predominant material over the brick, so it will change the predominant material of the house from brick to siding. So also, we're looking at detailed roaches across the board for those three. I think one of the other things to point out here is that they're asking, well, they're asking, they're asking for you to approve this subject to a variance from the zoning board of appeals. I believe that there are some architectural changes that could drop the amount of the appeal. So that's something that can be worked on between, you know, now and then, should you favor them with a decision that says subject to zoning board of appeals. And that's up to you, that's nothing that I can recommend or not recommend. But those are things like, the other things that I notice in the plan is I go through these things pretty quick. Let me see here. You gotta pardon me, but my computer went belly up today, so I stole Andrews. So it's not as familiar to me as the other. So here in the front elevation, what you're talking about is across the porch, that's where they pick up some more lot coverage, but they're still under. But the house size cantilever is over by one foot and that picks up some of the space that's on the inside. That also is something that may be adjusted prior to going to the ZBA. The other thing is, is if you take a look, and I want to get to this, like over here, in fact, this is actually good that this is sideways, like right in this area over here, you can see where my cursor is, there's the stairwell. The stairwell also has to be deducted by that, but we didn't have any dimensions on the stairwell, so we were unable to deduct it. It's been my experience that these stairwells are between 33 and 36 square feet. So right away, that would come off of the 290 as far as what that would be. The rest of it, you know, again, we'd have to discuss and talk to, you know, with them as to what they are and are not, you know, going to do to try to minimize that going forward. And again, I did explain that there's no guarantee that they will get past this meeting to the other, unless they do that, that's up to you. If you feel that they've made their case well enough that it's likely that they are going to do that, then fine. If not, then they can come back here for a redesign. That's entirely up to you. Other than that, I really don't have any other, you know, anything else in particular to say about this. It's over the first floor, there's little to no concerns about stormwater or anything like that because the roof is the roof, it's already there. So having said that, any questions that you have? I'm sure that either Zach would be happy to answer, or I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, Hank. Anybody like to go first?
Yeah, just for some clarification.
Yeah.
Hank, so the first page of the memo indicates that the proposed square footage is 2732, but then the comparison with the other houses is 2763. So is it 2732 then? Is the?
The 2732.
2732?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the reason, because I took out the staircase.
That does, okay. So that's my question, is that that would include subtracting the staircase?
Yeah, I took that.
Okay.
So 2732 has a staircase out of it?
Yes.
So the 290 asked for the ZBA already deducts? That's already including the deduction of the staircase?
No, that has the staircase in it because they haven't officially deducted it, but I put it there so that we would know that this is actually different, that there's two different things.
And you deducted 31 feet?
It'd be between, see, that's why I didn't have, that's why I didn't do it, but I took the average. So typically, those type of staircases are 30, between 33 and 36 square feet. So that's what I took roughly when we had that. So the answer is, no, it's not out of the 290. So that would be deducted from that because that's what they applied for, that's what they had. But yes, that's, that's the difference between the two is the staircase.
And then there's no change in footprint?
There's no change in footprint on the first floor, but the change in the footprint comes with the footings for the porch, but that's not habitable space.
Right, but so is that, so does the variance?
That would not affect the variance.
But is the variance, like, what, I mean, what is the current, like, does the current footprint of the house today match with the current footprint will be with the addition? Or does the porch, is that what's causing the need for the additional lot coverage?
No. It's not kind of, it's the maximum house size is what we're looking at. The difference is, is that they have the first floor, they have the second floor, which is a duplicate of the first floor, plus they have a cantilever.
Okay.
So that equals the total square footage that they would have to ask for, for the ZBA minus the 290.
Okay.
Assuming you're okay with that.
I'm sorry. Yeah, there's no, there's no variance is required for those subbacks in lot coverage?
No.
Right, it's the house size.
It's specifically the maximum house size.
And just to clarify, the house is a colonial already, there's just a family room in the back that we want to square off.
I noticed that the blueprints call, on the first page, call all of the existing residents on the block 13328, whereas the existing house in the middle is 13332, and the one to the right is 28, and the one to the left is 36. So that the blueprints itself, your front page of your blueprints are wrong.
We're aware of that?
Site plan, on the site plan.
Okay, on the site plan.
Yeah, I didn't fix it, I didn't.
Okay. Um, the porch does not jeopardize the lot coverage?
No.
The 35 by 6 feet long or whatever else, so that's okay. So it's just going straight up on the addition of the family room to create a master bedroom suite on the second floor? Is that correct?
That's correct, and there was a cantilever on the first floor, on the second floor rather. So that's why the footage looks a little bit different, that's why the second floor is bigger than the first floor.
Okay. And in looking at it, are you maintaining any of the windows in the house that already exist, or are you changing all the windows?
We're, we're adding windows, we're not changing windows. If you look at the front though, there is a small window currently. If you look at the front elevation, the south elevation, the upper right corner of machine A3, it says new bowl window. Right now, there's a small window right there, so we're trying to, trying to, you know, get a bigger window in the front. So that would be the only window on the front that we would be replacing, but we're making it bigger than what it currently.
Well, okay, because I know that Hank said that you didn't get all of the bonuses and some of the bonuses you can get are when you're changing your window and fenestration of mutton bars or whatever else. Your front windows have mutton bars, the rest of the house does not.
Correct.
So it's another way of trying to get more square footage allowed in the addition and not needing as much of a variance.
Correct.
If you're replacing other windows, that's why I'm asking.
Correct.
The plan is to replace all the windows. Yeah, the plan is to replace all the windows.
Okay, to replace all the windows?
All the windows, okay.
Okay, so that's why, my point is if you're replacing all the windows and you make them match, then you can gain square footage.
Yes.
By getting a bonus for that, is that correct, Hank?
You can, there's a few bonuses that they can get, you know, in going over this. But the plans don't call out the items necessary for me to allocate the bonuses.
Understood, but I was looking at just the mismatch of windows, but it's all matches all around without mutton bars and with mutton bars in the front.
There's substantial, there's some changes that are not overly expensive, that are not, that are not overly burdensome either, and that could definitely lessen the amount of the variance that's required.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, as a way of lessening the variance needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, the plan is to really redo the whole, like, build that, that master suite and then redo the whole exterior, just kind of modernize it.
Okay.
New siding, new paint, new windows, everything on the exterior.
Is the first floor basically staying the same?
The first floor, as far as remodel, is staying the same, the first floor is brick. We're gonna, you know, whatever color scheme, we're gonna paint it to match whatever we do on top.
Okay.
Just redo the whole, like, just bring it kind of modern, aged.
Okay.
Please, so let me, let me just ask for a point of clarification if I could, Mr. Chair. Are you, you're painting the brick?
The brick's already painted.
Okay, so the brick is already painted.
Yeah.
A quick question, Hank.
I'm good, thank you.
Just going back to the house size and the proposed and the allotment, you have 2442, but unless you're adding another 150 in there, it only came out to 2292. So really, there are variances for 40.
Unless I missed a number, but I don't.
So I got the 1,900 plus the 100 plus the 42 plus 250 architect?
Yeah.
That comes to 2292, not 2442, which could make some of variance.
There was a height variance that should have been in there.
Okay.
There's 26, so they pick up another 150. That's how we get to that number.
Thank you.
Not a height variance, there's a height allocation.
I'm just curious, on the east elevation at the top, the awning windows?
Mm-hmm.
That's just convenience? Is that, I mean, that's just a wall, you just chose to do smaller windows there? Well, it's the bedroom, we've got, we've got a ton of windows in that bedroom, it's a floor plan on K2. I mean, we've got, I think, windows in that bedroom, this is the bedroom, so.
Yeah.
We're trying to, you know, we don't want to have a wall without any windows, but we're just trying to, you know, occasionally make the sleep, so we're trying to make the windows not so big in certain areas. And, I mean, have you guys tried to bring this into conformity at all? Conformity in terms of what? Well, there's square footage. Have you, have you made any attempts to design within? Well, we literally just found this out late last week, so, I mean, we're, we're willing to do it, if needed, we can take the, the windows that we're replacing and add the buttons all throughout. So that would, that would lessen, you know, as you suggested. You know, other than that, you know, we'll see what else we can, we can do. But, I mean, it's mathematical, in designing the plan, we knew what the square footage was. It's like, you didn't just find out last week that it was over? Yeah, I did. Okay.
I would, just for edification, the code's online, Mr. Ostroff has been here many times in front of the planning commission, so, and that code hasn't changed in a while. So whether it was designed over or it was an oversight, that I can't speak to. But having said that, your, your point is well taken, it wasn't designed to that, but there is possibility of a way to get there or lessen the ask.
Well, obviously, building up on the edges is easier. Right. So, I mean.
No question.
To start cutting out an inch here or there, it's only going to do so much, but it's 10% over what it's supposed to be. I understand. And then the windows, and there's not a lot of design, and there's hope of design, but it's not there. Well, I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about. Well, and I, I don't like when we do designing on the fly, but there's a comment that you guys could earn more by doing extra design elements and enhancing what the variance is. Right, I understand that, we're, we're open to that. I guess that's just where my head's at right now, is trying to rationalize all of that. I don't know why I'm that. But I don't, I don't have any other questions at this point. Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm kind of feeling with you as well with that, as far as that, as far as, you know, can we, can we get what the actual plans would be before, before we approve it and then, in my mind? Because to your point, design on the fly is never, never a great thing. We're making a lot of assumptions sitting here, and then, you know, obviously, this is going to go to the ZBA as well.
Right.
For the variance as well. So, you know, that's a whole other hurdle on top of this and so forth. So is your plan to have those details parsed out? Yeah, absolutely. Before the ZBA? I think what we would, what we would propose to do is keep the footprint the same, stack over the, the existing lower level, and we'll try to come up with, you know, whatever we can do, such as the windows. I know, trim around the windows, because one of the items we've shown out on there, trimming around the windows. And I'll have to reread, you know, some of the other ones and go through that. But I, I don't, I don't think we would go in unless, you know, we were denied to, with lesser square footage. So the square footage would be the same.
Mr. Chair, just so that you're aware of this, the options on this are fairly straightforward. One is, is that you can table it to allow them to make the changes, you can deny it to allow them to make the changes. The table allows them to not have to pay the redonors fees and everything like that, so that's generally a courtesy. Or you can vote to allow it to go to the zoning board of appeals with the recommendation of the planning commission, subject to them finding that the variances are okay in the actual number. The hard part of this is a couple of them. One is, you don't know what the real number is at this point in time because we don't have that information. So we do know that there's several things that they can do, can't do. If some of you have a number which is your, for lack of a better way of putting it, line in the sand, which you would move the project forward to, we don't have that. So you can do one of two things, you can ask them to come back, you can ask them to go to the zoning board of appeals to get their variance, you know, approval is subject to that, if you're happy with the overview of the house. Other than that, or you can just outright deny it. It's up to you. But those are your options.
Mr. Chair, may I ask another question?
Yes.
So as we talk about the various bonuses and the, and the things architecturally that could be done, in your opinion, Hank, could they get to the point where a variance is not needed if they were to make some of those modifications to the plan?
No.
So no matter what they would have to go?
In, in my opinion, based on the drawings that we have right now, they would have to lose some square footage somewhere in order to do that. So, and I, I really do appreciate your question. The answer to that is, can they get a lot closer? Absolutely.
Okay.
But they can't get, in my, without substantially changing, then they can't get there.
Okay.
When is our, you know, do we not have a ZBA meeting or planning commission meeting in December?
We do have a ZBA meeting, but we're past early, I don't know what street plan we're going to make that be.
So it'd be looking at January for both.
It'd be looking at January for both. And truth be told, they typically would like you to go to the zoning board of appeals second after the planning commission, which would mean that they would go to the, they would be back in January for that, and then two weeks later, they would be on the planning commission docket for February. Now realistically.
The zoning board docket for February, right? Or be on our docket for January, planning commission docket for January, and the zoning board for February.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. So, I mean, you're basically looking about two weeks at a time of year where nobody's getting in the ground anyway. So that's up to you.
And at the ZBA, one of their stipulations is that they ask, is this the least amount of a variance that you can, you know, do? Can they change it at the ZBA when they come for, let's say, the 292 or whatever else, and they come in and there and that's what they're going in for, but the ZBA can come up and say, you know, making this change, this change, and this change will grant it?
The ZBA, the ZBA won't redesign the project.
Okay, that's what I thought.
What the ZBA will do is, is if they get it close enough or they come in with an ask that they believe is reasonable and there's a reason for it.
Mm-hmm.
That is not self-created, the ZBA may, and I can't speak for them, they may say that you've made enough of an effort here. They will have the advantage of seeing the drawings as they were at the planning commission and seeing what they have when it comes to the zoning board of appeals, which will be two different sets of drawings, otherwise there's no point going to the zoning board of appeals.
Right.
Unless you just say you're fine with it and they just roll it to the ZBA with it like it is.
Okay.
And it would be unlikely that that would be sustainable of the zoning board of appeals.
And we do have a letter, I think everybody got that, on, a neighbor, doesn't say exactly which neighbor, but.
To the west.
So.
He's immediately to the west.
Okay, as well. Any further questions from the commission? Okay, we'll open it up for public participation. Seated on, we'll close public participation.
I'm coming. I'm coming.
I just noticed on a lot of your plans, you talk about the lot coverage of the house, but I rarely see you talk about rear lot coverage 50%. And I know they have a paver patio, and maybe you say you can't step in now, but it sure looks like more than 50% of the rear lot is covered with impervious, impervious surfaces. And if you look at those grades, it also looks like it could be going to the neighbor. I don't know if there are any neighbors here, if they've had any issues, but it is part of your job to do innovative stormwater management. I might have the wrong adjective from the code, but, so, I'd like to see more addressing rear lot coverage.
Mr. Chair, if I could get a point of clarification from Mr. Ostroff, that patio is, exists?
Sorry?
The patio back there exists?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and everything in the rear yard exists as it is right now?
Yeah, we're not touching anything.
Okay, thank you.
We're literally not touching anything other than we're proposing to change the porch. Other than that, we're not touching anything at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Hank. Okay, any other public participation? Okay, we'll close public participation.
I'm going to make a motion to table this matter until applicants can come back and with a, with a modified plan to try to get some bonus coverage.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Post?
Mr. Chair, then for the record, we'll have this ready to go by the chamber.
Would you like these plans back? Would you like these back?
I don't even need them.
Okay, we'll recycle them.
You actually may want to hold on to those if you see the digits. Okay.
Sir. Moving on to agenda item number six, matter of consideration for solar panel, solar border placements request on the street side by on 13160 Boardman. You just want to introduce yourself and, and talk about your project.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Matias Barnruder, and I live on 13160 Boardman Avenue. And I'm here to ask for allowance to place a portion of the solar panels for old roof solar on a street facing street. If you could, Hank, if you could go in the presentation, that would be great, I have put a couple of slides together.
Yeah, he's, he's got one that actually has slides, let me throw this in here for him. Okay, I'm going to have to do it this way. And again, this isn't my computer, so I don't have a key for that. So you can go ahead.
If you go to the presentation mode on the bottom right, it would be super, and you see the level up and.
I don't have to. This is going to close it all up.
Let's do it this way. Let's do it this way. So, if you could just go to the next slide, if you'd like. So, this is a project overview. The house is a corner lot, so the entrance is facing Boardman Avenue, and the garage is facing Broadway to the west. The black area on the top you see there is a flat roof. So, that flat roof has been taken in consideration for the solar panels, but it's by far not sufficient enough. So, the take from the logic would be the south side, but the south side is forcing Boardman based on the ordinance, we said we stayed off it. So, we look, where do we place the rest? We're talking about three panels on the north side or on the west side. And that, can you flip to the next slide, Hank? So, before I go into technical, the benefits of this solar roof system, obviously reduced carbon footprint, supports Michigan Springs Energy Act, 60% renewable energy by 2030, and enhances property value and resilience specifically to the project for us, we're talking now. Eliminates 80% of SOx and Nwex. It reduces carbon footprint by over four tons per year and provides 80% of our annual household energy consumption, renewable energy. As well, it reduces local grid peak constraints by 31.2 kilowatt per day. And, which is great because by driving here, I see on this building, we have now the panels that are completed, which is very exciting. So, from a technical justification here, I don't know how much you spend on solar. I didn't before this, so I'm not an expert, but you normally measure apparently the capture of sun. So, that's the first factor when compared north versus west. And if you have a roof with no chimney, no obstructions, that first factor should be 100%. The second factor underneath is the tilt and orientation. So, if the orientation in Michigan would be a tilt level of 35 degrees and south facing would be 100%, that would be optimal. So, you see on the sun captioning, if we go on the north side, we're at 29% versus on the left side, much higher. And then, if we look at tilt and degree, we basically degrade our captioning to 29% just to keep this in perspective. Origin, for example, does not fund solar if you're lower than 75%. So, and we have five months without any sun capturing if we would go on the north side. So, it's not really practical, it's not efficient. So, the west side is the only feasible placement for these three panels from a, from a captioning standpoint. And you could switch to the next. And then, the ordinance obviously is visual impact. I think everyone-
Can you try to speak more into the mic?
Sorry. And, so I think everyone agrees for, for efficiency, south would be the best, west second. But the visual impact is obviously what drove the ordinance to be somewhat restricted. So, I took some pictures here from the Berkeley side. The panels were flush mounted, low profile, and to reflect with monochrome frame, black, like what we had here as well. The difference to the ones on this roof here, the mounting brackets here are surprisingly silver and I think highly visible. On our house, the mounting brackets, where else, everything is discreet and color matched to the panels. So, that would be less visible than what we have on, on this building here. The addition on visual impact is since we have this intrusion of the dormer and the protruding roofline of the garage, when you walk south on Berkeley, you will see the hedge, the garage roof, and as soon as you pass, you see the dormer. You will not really recognize the panels. If you look north, as you see on the top picture, you did a dormer first. So, really probably you really would see the three is when you stand right at the side entrance and look up. So, we talked to the surroundings, not all of them, but two, quite a couple of the neighbors and have received strong support. Some of them even raising the question, why do we have this ordinance as other cities don't have it? I just came back from Germany, actually a day earlier for this meeting, and took pictures. Some of them, I mean, there are so much solar panels where I feel maybe ordinance would be good for them, but clearly, the alternative energy mindset is different. It's much more there, I think. So, the proposal, proposed condition for approval here, this is Berkeley, from the top, is the three panels placed on the upper part of the west-facing roof between the dormer and the garage roof. And which minimal visual disruption from street view and provide maximum environmental benefit and minimum visual intrusion. So, that's just attachments. If there's any more questions, I have a letter as well from Weber. I have the drawings and then the detailed solar comparison of west-facing versus north-facing. Any, any question?
Thank you.
Hank, did you?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, at this point in time, I mean, part of the way that this was done was done so that there's nothing on the front-facing portion of the house, and that was what the commission wanted, and that was what happened with this. So, having said that, we still have an occasional house where we have two fronts. You have like Mr. Bob Mueller has, where he's fronting off of the one street, which is Boardman. That's the technical and the platina front. So, he can't put anything there. So, he's put them on the other side where he's managed to get a fairly decent array. And in order to maximize his efficiency, he's asking for three on the side for, on the side street. So, the reality of that is, is that you can kind of take a look at this. Although it's not tasking you with the same thing as the ZBA, it kind of is. So, the case here would be, in my estimation, is, and I appreciate all the other information that he has, is that, one, it wouldn't be above the peak of the roof. Two, it's on the back side of a dormer. So, it would be blocked from when you're looking down, when you're going down Boardman, or even for most of the time when you're coming down the side street, which, what is it? That's Berkeley, right?
Berkeley.
Yeah. So, when you take a look at that, it's as hidden from view as it could be. Also, he's not asking for another huge array of solar. He's asking for three panels. So, the reality of that is, is that if you applied the ZBA criteria, you could make the case that that's the minimum necessary, but the three panels gives him a marked increase in efficiency in the system as a whole. You can feel free to correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. But, but, so the other thing is too, is that you see how these are signed, and you see how they have in there where the fire setback is. Around solar panels, you have to be able to walk. There has to be a clear space for you to walk around that. That space also keeps them from going over the peak. And it also, in a lot of cases, this case in particular, keeps them from being visible. So, whether you're headed north on Berkeley, whether you're headed east or west on Boardman, you likely wouldn't see these three. So, at that point in time, it's up to you to decide if the efficiency meets the criteria that you would want to go ahead and approve it. Again, he didn't ask for them on the front of the house or the front side of the house. He's asked them for a place that is probably as least described as you could be on this side of the house, even though it's on the side street. So, it's the second street. It's the corner house. And as far as what you might consider a practical difficulty, he's got a corner lot. So, he's going to get less solar, and he's on the south-side facing street, which means that he can't put them on the best elevation for the house by virtue of the ordinance. So, he's putting them on the secondary side, which would be the west elevation. So, if you have any questions like that, I'm certainly happy to answer those to the extent that I can. Mr. Bob Mueller is very well-versed in the solar, in the solar business here, so I'm sure he could too, if there's any other questions.
Thank you, Hank. Any questions you may want to open up?
Not questions, just some comments. I appreciate the street view. I think that helped out a lot. That answered a ton of questions. I tried to look it up on Google Maps, and it doesn't give you that view of like what you said, the hidden. And I also think the, having those, what I call inefficiency screenings, kind of helped me better understand why we couldn't put it on the north side and hide it completely. So, I just wanted to provide that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I found that it was the minimal amount needed on the west side facing the street, and that it was pretty well-hidden. The street is there, it doesn't have a neighbor right up on top of it. And the neighbor across the street, if I'm not mistaken, is a ranch and isn't going to be up above looking down anyway. So, I find it, you know, the best solution to the situation that you're on a corner lot and you can't put it in other locations.
And this is like the second solar project you've seen in like the last month. It's when I walked past the last one recently, and it was very like unobtrusive. It was, you know, wasn't visually like disruptive. And so, I like that it's sort of, you know, similarly the minimal impact for visibility. I guess this is just a point of clarification for Hank. The last time we approved a solar plan like this on a side street, they had every neighbor surrounding them sort of chime in. And so, is that something that is just, like, was that unusual for our last review versus this review where?
What was unusual for the last review is it was a peninsula lot.
Right.
So, here, there's two sides exposed to neighbors, you know, to the street. There, there was three. So, the last case, they had all the neighbors sign off saying, hey, we don't have a problem with it. Here, he's got two.
And they've been noticed, so if they had any concern, they would have had the chance.
We wouldn't have got the, yeah, we wouldn't have got the letters if we would have done it.
Okay.
Any other?
You go for calculus?
And there should be, one neighbor at least should have submitted a letter and said it's strong support on it.
We'll open up the public participation. Seeing none, we'll close public participation. Motion to approve. We have a second?
Start it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I take it you're getting it in before the end of the year?
Yeah.
For credit. We knew that from the last time.
Agenda item number seven, item matter of discussion of stormwater ordinance.
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, we do have a couple people that we don't normally have with us here. We have Kevin Wayne. Kevin is our Department of Public Works Director. So, what we wanted to do was, is to kind of give you a little bit of an explanation as to what exactly our sewer is, how it works, where it goes. And we thought it would be a good idea to see if we can get Kevin to explain some of this. The map that you have that you can see in front of you and you were emailing. This shows not only our sewer system, but it also shows a significant amount of work that Kevin's department's undertaken in the last few years.
Yeah, since, uh, 16 something, I believe?
Yeah, since 2016, 2017. So, what I'm going to do here is I'm going to let Kevin go ahead and explain how the sewers work, where it goes, and how this basically works and how this lays out. And then, having said that, if there's any questions that you have with Kevin, that would be, this is the guy.
Hey, you sent, emailed this, this map also?
That would have, that would have, that should have gone, or I might have got it too late, but this went out, and it's actually on the website too, isn't it? Francesco, this one did we put out or not? If not, he'll put it up there. But this is, this is the existing sewer map. This will be available. We're going to put this on the website.
So, yeah, this map here is showing kind of what we've been doing throughout the city. Lining sewers. And the green is where we actually had to replace them in backyards. But majority of our city in the backyards is eight-inch sewer. And then, we go from 12 to 18 to 24 to 30-inch, which dumps into the county mains, which is the Hubbard drain and the Allen drain. Hubbard drain is six foot tall, and the Allen drain is nine foot. So, we're gravity-fed, no pumps, and we just dump ourselves into those county mains, which then gets fed down to Detroit.
So, one of the other things, and help me out, maybe you can elaborate on this. The sewers that we have in Honeytow Woods are combined sewers.
Combined sewers as well, yeah.
Throughout the whole city?
Uh, some of the, not all, but some of the backyards that are the smaller eight-inch is strictly just residential taps.
And where might that be?
Uh, majority of those are in the middle section there.
Okay.
Between Scotia and Wyoming, you'll see some eight-inch that's backyard. So, there's backyard and front yard, and the front yards are bigger sewer lines. So, that's where a combined, the smaller sewers are more residential, which, you know, in the middle section there in the back, there might be 10, 10 houses tapped on the back there. Just, all depends. You'd have to run, run a camera down there and confirm which houses are tapped where. But yeah, we do have front yard and backyard sewers.
And I think of one of the other points that, for consideration, is that a lot of these backyard sewers were put in very, very early, before the alleys were vacated.
Yes.
So, at that point in time, they were crock sewers, they were fed to the back, it was in an alley. Years and years and years ago, the alleys were vacated. And the only thing that was reserved there was a utility easement, right? So, until it's broken, you don't really fix that because you have to go in through people's backyards as represented by all the green areas.
Yep.
So, those actually, there had to be a backhoe that went in there and dug through these people's backyard, which certainly was a most unplus experience.
It was very challenging, but-
Yeah, absolutely. So, that's part of what you have when you run with these. I will say that, you know, Kevin, and to be commended on this too, is that we've been able to allocate an awful lot of sewer linings.
Yes.
And the linings, what that does is that we understand that there's crock there. We understand that there may be different materials there. But it actually forms another pipe inside the pipe. So, as a result, what that is, is it is a lot less intrusive.
Yep.
And they tackle the bad areas first. And as you can see, there is some pattern to that where most of them are, so they, they look at them. But would it be fair to say, Kevin, that most all, if not all, the sewers in the city have been cambered at this point?
Yes. And we're looking into reevaluating, continue the lining process because it is a cheaper way of going before they get to, you know, before they fail, and then when there's no choice.
So, how does that tie into stormwater and what they're going to do with it? As you've heard in the last couple presentations, there's different ways of managing stormwater, and we're not done with the presentations yet. There will be other people forthcoming. But it was this point in time, we thought that it was time for you to understand what we've got here. So, whatever we do, whatever we tie into, whatever you decide to tie into or not to tie into, this is your explanation time for what we have there. Everything will end up there that isn't absorbed on the site, on the lots, on the surface, or anything like that. It will end up in that.
Yeah, and I would recommend other alternatives like rain gardens or French drains or the JEB system where you can, it's, a lot of times, people in backyards, it's more clay. It has nowhere for the water to go. So, there's other ways of feeding that water and letting it drain instead of putting it into the system.
They, they did see a JEB's presentation at the last, at the last meeting. They, they did see a JEB's presentation at the last, at the last meeting, which is helpful. There will also be other alternative ones. So I, I guess at this point, Mr. Chair, if you want to ask Kevin any questions while he's here.
I mean, I have a question, just, just only because maybe for my own self and maybe there's members in the audience, YouTube and so forth. When you say line, what, can you just briefly, I don't, I'm sure you can go on to it for half an hour, but kind of briefly to kind of talk about what that process is and.
So what they do is they'll clean the line thoroughly, and then they'll pull a cable through and they'll pull back a sock through the, like, let's say they do a thousand-foot stretch. Then they have a system that steams and heats it up and it expands, and it hardens almost like a cast, stronger than concrete. It's just a thin wallet around the hole. And it's, they're supposed to be stronger than what's there now, so.
It loses some capacity.
Very little, quarter, yeah, quarter inch, yeah. Very little, but yeah, so like if you have an eight inch sewer, yeah, it's going to lose a little bit of its size, so.
Part of that too, just for clarification, again, Kevin, feel free to correct me on anything here, is that when you have that, you point out that you are losing a little bit of dimension with the liner? Absolutely. But then I would point out too, that if everything is replaced with Schedule 40 or different types of sewers for the.
The cost is.
Those are four inch. So you can go substantially smaller depending on the material. There's things that, like one, a crush rate, you know, that would be important, what pressure rate do these things crush, or what can they stand on? Can you drive a tank over them? That's going to be what Kevin asks, you know?
Yeah.
But, but the answer to that is to say, yeah, there's different types of materials. And again, he can probably tell you better than I, but the use of liners in these types of applications is becoming significantly more prevalent.
Cost efficient.
Yeah, it is completely cost efficient and you're getting a product that is equal to or as good as. Now, that's not to say that, you know, 40 years down the road, we may find that, oops, this isn't the greatest thing. But right now, it's checking out pretty good.
Yeah, surrounding cities have used it, so it's, it's out there.
Because the alternative is just a complete replacement.
Pipe bursting. We did, well, that green there by Nadine, we did a pipe burst and it's very costly as well.
This is just the sewers, though?
Yes, yep.
Which is where, the reason that we're talking about those is because that's where a lot of the water's going to end up in.
Yep.
Kevin, could you mind if you described the pipe bursting process for them, so they?
Same, it's, well, same thing, they clean it and they'll pull a cable through, get it cleaned up to where they can pull a cable through. And then that cable's hooked up to a bullet where they thump it from one end, a port, they have to dig a port down to the depth of the sewer and then pull it through. So I don't know if you guys saw Scotia there when Scotia Project was going, they had that black pipe running down the street, that was the pipe burst. So they had to lay it all out, fuse it, and then pull it all in from the next manhole down, which was a process. And they actually got it stuck and, but they got through. It was a challenge, but they got it, but yeah.
So they break up the old one?
So what it does is this bullet will break the old one as the new one's going through. And then they'll do any taps. They have to dig up in people's backyards to just retap their sewer line.
Kevin, is it fair to say that the sewers absorb rain, like, do they, if they're not lined, if they're old, they're not lined, do they absorb stormwater in the backyard? Like, is it, is it a place?
That is possible if there's a joint separation, because the old clay, clay crock is like a joint, bellon joint. And if those have become separated, that's where you get the root intrusion, that's where you get collapses and.
So is it possible that if a, then, if a sewer is lined in someone's backyard, that they might find more water collecting?
That is possible, yes.
Because it no longer could go into that.
It's not finding that surface, yeah, that.
So are we finding complaints about backyard water collection in any of these areas of the city where the sewers have been lined?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. Not that I'm aware of on that.
I think, Jessica, you bring up a good point. There's, there's a couple things that consider when doing this is, yes, water can certainly get in through an infiltration point, like if the, the mortar comes out between the joints and roots get in. The problem is the second part of that sentence, and roots get in. So once these things come through and the pipe is no longer solidified, you then become obstructionary with how these things are. So you don't have the clear flow and the sewers.
More maintenance costs, because then you've got to clean it more often.
And the sewers here are gravity fed.
Yep.
So, which means drops downhill. So that's one of the things. But yes, water can get in there, and yes, I do know of a couple places where we have repaired something and people have said, well, there seems to be an awful lot more water there. But then again, you're also taking a look at an awful lot more water relative to weather conditions now and weather conditions 15, 20 years ago.
Right, like, I'm not suggesting that we've done a scientific study, so.
No, right, right, but that's, that's a good question, though. So I mean, you certainly want to get it out there because I wouldn't profess to tell you that any method that we're going to come up with is going to be perfect.
Yeah.
What we would hope to is to end up with some type of an ordinance at the end of the day that really spells out what it is that we're trying to accomplish, like with an intense section, what it is that we're, how we're trying to accomplish it, and the end game, you know, what is available, what are the available methods to accomplish that? So that would be kind of the things. And when we get to that, I'll have that question that I'll, I'll bring up with him and we can have that discussion. But having said that, I, you know, thanks for the map, you know, I mean, it's helpful for us to understand.
Yeah. And if you have any questions, you can feel free to call.
Yeah. You know, and any emails or anything like that?
Yeah.
If you have questions you want specifically and you'd like an answer to it, you guys should certainly feel free to email me and I'll ask Kevin.
Is the intention to repair and re, I would say, put the liner in all of the existing Huntington Woods plumbing or?
As we camera, because we, like I said, we went through the whole city camerating and then the engineers in Noack and Fraus, they reviewed the footage and we went after the ones that were ready to go and that we're going to continue as, yeah, as money and budget goes, yep. Yeah, we want, we would like to continue, especially the ones in the backyard, before they get to the point where you have to pipe burst or dig up, so, yeah.
Yeah, so correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but sewer rebuild and roads are about a million bucks a mile? Is that about right?
Yeah.
Okay. So this would be an alternative that, that we might be able to save some and do more?
Yep, before it gets too late.
Well, right, and that, that allows us to work on our roads as more of a mill and fill than, you know, a complete rebuild of the sewers and that.
Yeah, because we did, like, those ones we dug up, especially Boardman was, we had to dig up the whole backyard and, and we're worried about garages and DTE poles. It was a, it was a project.
People's fences, people's dogs getting out.
Yep, kids and, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you.
You can ask public participation. Yeah, open up the public participation.
I just had a question.
Yeah, turn it up to the vector, introduce yourself and.
My name is John Suro, I live at 10044 Talbot. Mr. Wayne, I just had a question. I was listening to your presentation, very interesting. You were talked about there's eight inch, it used to be drainage in the back of the properties.
A lot of it's residential, it drains the residence, sewer.
Sure. Now, when, when the lining was applied, you said that there were some homes that were still tied to the drainage, right?
Sewer, yeah.
Yes. So when you lined the, when the, when the pipes were lined, did that block their connection?
They have a robot that comes in and cuts out the.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Any other public participation?
So at your last presentation, Brad Brickell came out and was promoting prohibited connections, 38.63 in the municipal code. And I appreciated that Commissioner Steinhardt brought up that not everybody in a region could connect to the city sewer. So he presented it also to the city commission and they were sort of interested in prohibited connections. And I just want to remind you that you have on number 48, we're trying to encourage residential properties to add over a certain threshold of square footage to show retention of first flush events for the net increase of impervious surface they add. That's on your high priority list for the year, so you're probably still figuring out what that threshold of square footage would be, and also figure out what the first flush would be. I know Brad kept mentioning a rain event, and we're going to have to come up with a standard of what is our rain event? How much water and how much time and how many years average? And also, again, I've encouraged many times, you have number 13 from the master plan, sustainability as medium priority, but you have not included number 12, and that's launch an education awareness campaign, I don't have my glasses on, on best management practices for stormwater runoff and provide instructions for personal management. So I hope that we're not going to move forward with this connection to the city sewer, the prohibited connections, because one, it can't be equal, two, it'll be all the million dollar houses that are, the new builds that will connect. And until we get a grip on stormwater management in the city, I don't think we should be allowing prohibited connections. And I'm hoping maybe he can tell us too, can everybody's driveway drain from the rear of property all the way to the street? Or should we be encouraging some people to dump some of it into their backyard? I talked to driveway contractors. Whenever I see them in the city, their goal is to get all the water from the garage at the rear setback all the way to the street if they can and not manage any in the back. So I just talked, I'll, I'll wrap. I just talked to somebody who lives in Oak Park, and I think I brought it to your attention, that Oak Park is using some form of satellite and AI to analyze the unique stormwater footprint of each property, and they're charging them their sewer rates based on that. So I think right now, we're charging based on water usage, which isn't an accurate reflection of how much water we're dumping into the system. And some cities have been sued for doing that, so.
Thank you. Any other public participation?
My name is Jan Weisdemms. I live at 10804 Lincoln in Huntington Woods. And I think this is my third time coming up here. I have had ongoing problems of flooding in my yard when we have rain of probably an inch and a half or anything higher than that, where my backyard is so flooded that I lose over a third of my actual yard and I have ducks swimming in my yard. And I'm fortunate enough that over time, it does dissipate, but for days later, I am walking on spongy grass and I have lost everything that I have ever planted in the back of my yard. I am very concerned about two new builds behind me. I think the, a letter I have from Noack and Fraus is dated 2007. I don't know the exact date of when this house was built and the one next to it, there was a large ranch, it was going to be three houses, but they ended up with two. And ever since those houses have been built, there have been problems of flooding. And also, the house has an attached garage and the driveway is built in such a way that nobody can turn their car around and get it into the garage. So they had to expand out the garage, the driveway, all the way almost to the end of their yard. And they have astroturf in their backyard. Because the grass was so spongy, their animals couldn't even go out in the backyard. I don't know why or how astroturf became a part of that. But anyways, and I am dealing with quite a bit of water and it does, because I don't have clay, it dissipates over time, but like I said, I'm left with a lot of that. I also have pulled some records, a letter from, I have from Noack and Fraus about some things that they recommended be done by the builder and the people who bought the house. And it says that defined swales shall be noted on the plan to indicate the drainage pattern along the side of the proposed residence adjacent to the existing property. And on provide finished grade elevation, there are several recommendations. I have been unable to get any proof of an as-built survey or anything to show that any of this has been done. So I'm concerned that either the builder's not compliant, that things that are in the ordinance are not being followed through to make sure people are doing what they're supposed to do. Also, the house appears to be over the 50% lot size, and I think as we're allowing these houses to be built and taking more and more space and taking, taking away a lot of green space in times where we're experiencing all this extra water, we're going to have more and more problems in this city with flooding. And the more and more people I talk to, the more angry people are getting about it and more and more people are, are concerned about it. The people across the street from me have to take pumps and pump the water out of four or five backyards, down the driveway into the street in order to protect their houses and their lawns. And I feel that something should, needs to be done to address the issues that people are dealing with now and to prevent, you know, McMansions or houses coming in here that violate the ordinances and for some reason, people are either not following through or turning a blind eye. But it, yeah, I want to tell you that it's increasingly becoming a problem, more and more people are getting upset. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your.
Any other public participation? Chris? Yeah, one, 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 we'll, we'll open it back up for another, another agenda item, but not, yeah, you've already had your opportunity. Okay. We'll close public participation and move on to section B, which, Matt?
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, we brought with us Matthew Zaleski, our city attorney. He's serving a dual purpose here tonight because he's also here for the front yard, the landscaping section. But I mean, now might be a good time to throw a couple questions his way if you had any questions as to the legalities of it. I think that some of the things brought up, like one of the residents brought up something that was done in 2006, you know, or a letter from Noack and Fraus. I don't know whether he can comment on that, but I think what I would look for from Matt, if at all possible for this, is to see if we can't ask him to go ahead and try to find out what the other cities are doing, not like Brad did so much, but the legalities of it is, and come up with some kind of legalese that we could maybe use for that. Nothing's going to happen at tonight's meeting, but it's something that you might want to impart like your thoughts to Matt so that he has a clue going forward of what it is that we're looking for. And then any questions as far as legalese as to what's already been thrown your way as far as education and this?
Yeah.
Yeah, start if you don't mind. I just want to be clear, a lot of what we hear is plans get approved and then the people, they build their driveways one way that they weren't supposed to be, or they, they don't, they don't go according to the plans or whatever, you know? As the planning commission, our responsibility and our task is to go through the plans, make sure they comply with the code, and then if people are not following the code or if they pass their inspection and they turn their downspouts another way after the inspection, we're not an enforcement body in that respect, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right, yeah, well, and the downspout thing is a particular problem. Certainly if you've got something that's being built not to the specifications of the site plan, the final approved building plans, that's incumbent upon the inspector to flag it and have the correction. But if it's already passed inspection and something's added afterward or the downspouts are turned around, particularly if they're in the backyard where we can't just waltz in and look, it's definitely a concern that's difficult to grapple with.
So I guess the question is, what, what is the remedy in that situation if someone is, if somebody turns their downspouts the wrong way and it impacts their neighbor? Does the neighbor call the city and the city's supposed to come out and inspect it? I mean, how, you know, how does that?
It would end up being a complaint-based enforcement. And then, of course, the, the issue is trying to get the city inspector in a vantage point to see it themselves, which may require the, the neighbor letting them into their backyard so they can see it from, from the neighborhood. so they can see it from the neighboring property or, worst-case scenario, administrative search warrant. But there has to be some sort of personal observation from the city's perspective to go down that sort of route.
Okay. It would be difficult to get an administrative search warrant for the way a downspout's facing. But typically, if there is an agreed party and the downspout is not facing the way that it was supposed to be facing, that's just a simple matter of getting the code enforcement officer to take a look at it. And if he feels that it's not termed correctly, then he would go ahead and issue a ticket, which would get a court appearance, and then at that point in time, the judge would order that.
The code enforcement officer has permission to go on the property or needs to get permission?
Has to get permission. Code enforcement can't do anything other than walk up to the door and ring the doorbell.
Okay.
So we heard tonight from one of the residents that they added on to their driveway. Obviously, officially, they would have to come and get a permit for a driveway. Now, what if they, they're doing it themselves, and they do it on their own, you know, on a weekend project? Is that, we didn't know about that until somebody reports that.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then I would defer to the legal department as to if that was done 15 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago, or 50 years ago, whether that's still enforceable or if by the virtue of the length of time, there may or may not be something we can do.
Well, one thing that has certainly helped us is that within the past couple of years, the Michigan Supreme Court has confirmed in published law that a nuisance per se, a violation of the zoning ordinance, is a continuing violation every day that it exists. Now, a lot of our ordinance have always said that, but the Supreme Court put it in writing. And so when it comes to the statute of limitations for pursuing a zoning ordinance violation, we are on strong ground these days to pursue it regardless of when it started.
What about if it's like a situation where it's like a new homeowner, right? Something happened, violation occurred 15 years ago, person sells their house, and the homeowner may not be aware of the--
Well, and that's where their due diligence comes in. So, you know, just because you buy a property that's out of compliance with the zoning ordinance does not mean that it's absolved of the sins that exist.
And where the ordinance or code may have changed over the years so that something is now legal nonconforming, new phrase in my vocabulary. So then sort of, can you explain again how that just factors in?
Presuming that whatever exists was legal at the time that it was put in, then, yeah, if there's a code change down the road that reduces lot coverage or whatever, that prior state is allowed to exist as long as it stays in its present form and isn't destroyed. So that would be lawful, existing. There wouldn't be anything we can do about it if it was lawfully established. If it was not lawfully established or was prohibited at the time, then it's not legal nonconforming.
And I don't spend a lot of time perusing a code, but how do, how does the average resident in Huntington Woods know what the code or what the ordinance was 15, 20, 30 years ago versus how it reads today?
It's hard to figure it out, even from my chair sometimes. But essentially, when you're looking through the ordinances, it will show when different sections were last updated, and then you can use that information to zero in on the specific ordinance as adopted to see what was changed at that time. I mean, we have some of our updates that haven't yet been codified that are up there, but there is that paper trail out there. But no, it's not like you're going to go onto the ordinance and find a track changes copy of every change that's been made.
To Matt's point, usually at the end of your ordinance, it'll have a date that it was adopted, and it may have the second, the date prior to that, so maybe one or two, sometimes even three dates on the unit code. And that'll tell you at that date and time, that was when an ordinance change was what it was. It won't necessarily tell you what the change was, but it'll tell you that something occurred. So at that point in time, if you want to go back and look at something, we always have, the city's got a book of minutes and records from year one, really. And you can find it. Sometimes it's not so easy, but you have to go through a whole year worth of minutes in order to find it, and maybe two or three boards. But that's typically what it is. What he's saying has exactly been what I've experienced.
Any other questions?
So I think as we're going forward and to the extent that I'm looking at the ordinances, I know you've had a number of presentations, we've certainly heard plenty of public comment. You know, as Hank was saying, looking at what is the intent of the commission and where do we want to go with the ordinance review and potentially updating ordinances? I would like some direction as to where to focus my energies, because there's so many different areas we can concentrate on. Is it new construction? Is it existing construction? Is it downspouts? Prohibited connections is an interesting one, because I can tell you, I've looked into that one fairly closely, and I think most communities have the same type of prohibited connection ordinance that we do. And I know Hank has advised me of a couple of communities that apparently allow those connections, and I won't name them, but I was looking in, and sure enough, they have the same ordinance we do. So something's happening off the books. That's not the best route to go either. And I think there is a concern about the equity in the enforcement of that since we can only expect so much capacity for those types of connections. So that was one thing I've been interested in. I haven't seen an ordinance to date that necessarily works on that point to ease that up. But anything else I'd like, you'd like me to focus on, because it's a huge topic. I don't want to just be kind of searching in the dark for what's most important to you.
I think, Mr. Chair, if I might offer a couple of suggestions to get that conversation started. One is, you might want to think about what the intent is. What is it that you really hope to accomplish here? And if you can get the intent, or Matt can take a look at what other communities have done for the intent, that might be helpful. Another thing is too, is the prohibited connections. The prohibited connections, as my understanding of it, and I certainly would defer to our legal department, is that they're prohibited based on the fact that people might have, plagiarism is the most sincere form of flattery in ordinances. So if you'll find that our ordinance and Oak Park's ordinance and Warlow's ordinance are virtually the same, part of the reason for that is, is that it works. What it didn't take into consideration was is that while all of those other communities have separate sewer systems that have separate storm and separate waste, that Huntington Woods does not. So as a result, the logic behind that was is that, well, the other cities can have it because they can do it on a separate storm line, we can't because we don't. And communities like Huntington Woods, and again, not going through the names that, you know, Matt was talking about, is that you have to still have some kind of method for that. But the ones that are doing it are ones that would have combined sewers. And so far, that's been, and I don't know legally acceptable, but it's been, you know, acceptable in terms of engineering. But we have a lot, before we're ready to recommend anything, before we're ready to put any of this into an ordinance, we still have a lot of research to do. But I think that we could start the framing with the intent and then perhaps see if we can't ask Matt to get ordinances from other cities with combined sewers and see if maybe there's not some information that we can glean from that that might help us frame our ordinance. So if you have any other thoughts that you would like to give Matt some information on, now would be the time to do it. And then, of course, you will still have other participation.
I guess I have a question. Do most cities have these prohibited connections? Like they prohibit them, or most cities do not prohibit it?
I, it's hard to say, there's a lot of cities out there.
No, no, I know you said--
It's a very common, I would think that it's more prominent than not.
More prominent to have the prohibition?
To have the prohibition, yeah. Because I do, I do encounter it a lot.
So then communities where they are doing this, and you said that they still have the prohibition in their ordinance?
I've seen a few examples of that, so.
So do you understand that from a legal standpoint?
Something's going on that the ordinance doesn't speak to.
Worked after the inspection.
Maybe people are getting various, I don't know. I'm not suggesting that there's anything underhanded going on, but without knowing specific cases, it's hard to know for sure.
And I would suggest that a private property can't get a variance due to public thoroughfare in right of way. So the odds are if something's happening of that nature would be happening on private property. And while that may or may not be acceptable, my suggestion would be is let's give Matt some time and let that be part of the direction so that we can find that out and see if we're barking up the laundry altogether.
And maybe this is a different person that would be interested in running this one to ground, but should capacity be a component of our stormwater ordinance? And if so, what is our capacity of throughput?
The problem that you're going to run into, and I can let Kevin speak to that--
Noack and Fraus.
Noack and Fraus. Is that I can just tell you with capacity, capacity is relative to how fast that capacity is reached. So in 2014, you saw the capacity of the sewers reached in record time, where it was in an hour. I mean, I had up to the fourth floor, up to the fourth step in my basement was filled with water. That was because of the volume of water that was unleashed at that point in time, infiltrated the system, and it just completely obliterated it, you know? I mean, it was just that way. So I think that the volume, while we can probably get you an answer on that, we probably should, Kevin, if you wouldn't mind, maybe ask Brad to see what it is. And then what, the question that I would think might be important with that is, in what timeframe do we attain that volume? What does it take? Is it a one-inch-per-hour rain for 12 hours, two days, 15 minutes? And see if that might bring that into control? And then see if that is a component, but with the understanding that we're not going to be able to control necessarily everything that enters that system.
Agreed. Is our system a one-way flow in the sense that we're feeding towards Detroit, but no other cities are feeding into us? Or are we part of that chain?
We're part of the county drains that are the bigger, yeah.
But, so the county drain goes through and every city kind of feeds in?
Yeah.
It's not like Birmingham's feeding into us that we then feed into Ferndale that we--
Yeah, so like this line here goes through and that--
That's the main line that everyone's feeding into.
--into Berkeley. So they get, yeah, they get pumped into that as well. Same here with the bigger one here that, I try, Warlow gets a little bit.
Which one's the Hubbard drain, right here?
I don't know.
Okay. It's, I think it's--
It's one of these two, yeah.
I think it's this one. But regardless of which, even if you have a six-foot, you know, tall drain like Kevin articulated, if you have a six feet tall, it's kind of like a Pepsi bottle, you know? If you've got a smaller one, even if it's going in bigger ones, stays. So there's, there's some differences, and there's some, how it enters the system is equally as important. But yes, we can get more information from Brad on that, and if need be, we can have Brad come back and speak on that topic for us.
Do you have that very?
But I think if we--
Back in the day, 100 years ago, we were designed well with our sewer system. It's just how much more room is allowed. That's what you got to keep considering.
So great, another thought, Matt. So as you look at how other cities have drafted ordinances to address stormwater management on personal residential property, I would be curious as to how they've talked about what options exist that meet the intent of the ordinance? So I, you know, we've talked about generalities of catch basins and French drains. I got really uncomfortable hearing about an individual resident's personal business. But how would something be written in a way that it could be inclusive of the sort of well-known standards? But then, you know, are cities writing ordinances that talk about some of these newer technologies? And how could it be written in a way that is, if we were to go down that path, is general enough to allow residents to meet, again, the intent of the ordinance, but opening them up to other technologies that are out there?
Or that aren't out there.
Or that aren't out there, yeah. Like what standards would those technologies have to meet in order to be sufficient for the rest of the stormwater management?
All right. We will open up to public participation.
John Swiro again from 10044 Talbot. So, you know, I'm gleaning some information regarding these ordinances, the prohibited connections. And we're talking about, also earlier in the meeting, about how people want to expand their homes to impervious layers or surfaces within, on their property, which also affects the ability to drain water. And we're trying to do something, it sounds like, that reduces the strain on the sewage system, but yet we continue to allow less green on property to be developed. I know from my experience, my neighbors on each side of me rebuilt their driveway, they made it wider. One neighbor pitched their driveway toward my property, and the other neighbor raised their driveway eight inches, eight and a half inches, and pitched their driveway toward my property again. I was flooded. I came to the city asking, after the first neighbor did this in 2016 or 2017, and the plans had already been approved. There was no regard for a neighbor maintaining water on their property. And we're here, we're talking about maintaining water and what we're going to do with the water, and the city wants to get rid of the water, they want to reduce the burden of water. But yet, nothing's been done to enforce the ordinances, which my understanding, the ordinance are set up so that a neighbor should not unreasonably burden another property. It's also my understanding that when the site plans were developed for this back in, what, 1927, that there was a plan for drainage, and it did go to the alleys. And it did go either north or east or west in the Brooklyn subdivision between Scotia and Wyoming. But now we have a situation where we're having problems with the stormwater, where the city is allowing neighbors to divert water from one neighbor's property to another neighbor's property and not doing anything about it. And when the neighbor, for instance, me, comes to the city and asks for assistance, I'm ignored. And instead, even though the plans were not approved, the driveway gets approved despite the fact that there are elevation studies that I had performed from a surveyor, despite the fact that I had analysis from a civil engineer, McDowell and Associates, despite the fact that I had studies done from a contractor and source cause expert, and nothing gets done. So what happens is, the city is looking at dealing with a prohibited connection, but the city's not also dealing with the fact that they're allowing all these variances to occur. They're allowing, without any enforcement mechanism, they're allowing these people to develop beyond what their site plan says or in opposition to what their site plan says, and nothing's being done. And what that does, if the city doesn't take control of it, that puts it on the homeowner. Now, I'm an attorney so that I can, I can handle my own case, but I still spend tens of thousands of dollars, probably $30,000 to $40,000 on experts, having to deal with this. Most people in the community can't do that. I had to file two lawsuits on my own because nobody in the city would do anything. I got a judgment in one that forced them to change their driveway, and Mr. Berry came out and was micromanaging it, because I could, I was there, I could see it. And then I had another situation where I had to sue again-- And then I had another situation where I had to sue again and to get them to put up a curb because the city wouldn't do anything. That's a problem. And when I have to sue my neighbors, one, that changes the whole dynamics in the neighborhood. That makes that person the bad guy when the city should be taking responsibility and pursuing these claims. But two, and this is the bigger issue, for, for neighbors that are being burdened by water, what happens is, the homeowner that is infringing upon their other neighbor, they then turn it over to their insurance company, and they have insurance coverage, so they have free legal services, and that puts a huge impossibility on a normal citizen of Huntington Woods to protect themselves. They can't. It's just financially and prohibitively impossible. So, you know, when we're talking about these prohibited connections, I think the first order of business should really be, it's just my opinion, is to enforce the ordinances, to enforce people to maintain water on their own property. If they want to have less green space on their property, they should keep the water on their property and figure out a way to do it. And the cheapest way to do it, if they want a dry well, fine, they already have the machinery on their drive, on their property, it's easy for them to make the dry well, but it's a lot harder for me, or somebody similar to me, to bring in the machinery and create a dry well on my property so I can accommodate the water from my neighbor. And we've heard some talk about how there's more and more water, I don't know if this is a study or what, I didn't, wasn't aware that there's more rain. But if there is more rain, then why are we approving all of these new properties for exceeding their, their ground cover? If there's more rain, and we're getting more rain. But also, if we're acknowledging that these are clay, clay, this is clay soil, which still absorbs water, why are we continuing to approve it? Why are we talking about prohibited connections when we haven't even dealt with the situation that we have an ordinance for already to stop? We also talked about how, you know, can you enforce something that's been 15 years or 10 years? What happens, buyers should do their due diligence? Well, you know what? The, my neighbors both claimed that they've had the situ, they, they were draining water on my property for more than 15 years. The court said, fine, you are, but you still lose. You don't get a prescriptive easement to drain, you can't increase the flow of water. So I don't think it's really in the city's position to start making legal determinations of whether or not somebody's acquired adverse possession or acquiescence. That shouldn't be something the city should do. That should be the neighbors, that if they claim that they have adverse possession or acquiescence, and therefore the city can't enforce their ordinance, let that neighbor who's trying to drain onto their neighbor's property enforce it, as opposed to the city making a, a determination that they're now allowed to because this has existed for more than 15 years. It ignores a lot of different facts that come into the equation. I just ask that the city, you know, before we start really looking at prohibited connections, that the city start enforcing its own ordinances.
Thank you. Any other public participation?
Hellstack, 13108 Talbot Avenue. That was extremely helpful. I've heard this story over and over again, and it's absolutely true. And I'm getting conflicting messages from the city in terms of a simple question in a way, when is my neighbor's stormwater their problem or my problem? And there seems to be a view that it's my problem when the stormwater is coming off my neighbor's yard. That seems to me fundamentally wrong. Is there a legal principle here? Is there some we should know about legally that, does the Fifth Amendment apply in terms of suing the city? Would you like to discuss that? Can you respond to that?
Yeah, this is comments only.
Comments only, of course, that makes perfect sense. The other thing I would suggest is, why don't you talk to Don Carpenter at Lawrence Tech, or Carol Miller at Michigan, at Wayne State, or certainly somebody at Oakland, to come in, who actually knows what they're talking about? Certainly the city engineer doesn't seem to. And find out, what is best practice? What should we be doing? And going back to your point, the, what used to be called a thousand-year storm is now considered a 70-year storm, because as the air gets warmer, it holds more water. And so we are indeed, should anticipate and plan for increasing water problems in the city. We need to think about how to make the city, including its residential property, sponges so that less water goes into the, the system. If you approach somebody who knows what they're talking about in this arena, they probably would get you a grad student who would do whatever research you might need in a way that's knowledgeable and informed in terms of best practice. Thank you very much. Fifth Amendment, I'm coming in for you.
Any other public participation?
Yes, I just wanted to add something on the letter from Noak and Fraust. It says here, add a note to the plan that states that the future homeowner shall be made aware that standing water may collect in the southeast corner of the property seasonably as this is the low point of the property, and the location of a sub-pump discharge shall be shown on the plans and be directed towards a proposed swale and/or hard surface with overflow flow to the public right away. So I, I am going, I'm in the process of trying to FOIA, trying to get some of these documents to find out, did people actually do the due diligence? Were these things that were recommended actually followed through? So I have to find the paper trail, but I'm not giving up on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and to make a point with her letter, there, with the pre-built survey, they were warning, you're going to have water in the southeast corner of your property, and guess where the water is in her property? The northeast corner. So I just want to show you, I wish I had bigger pictures you could pass me through, why I'm here promoting stormwater management, if you could pass that through. I always had a little water behind my garage, but then a new driveway was permitted in 2019, and then that's what my, that's what my yard looked like. I have 20 feet behind my garage, and I was flooded all the way up, almost to the front of my garage. My garage is 20 feet deep, and I could walk with boots about that deep, okay? So one of the problems is, the garage permit looked like this, and it said, all it said was same footprint, but there was no indication of the high point, there was no indication of which way the garage apron was sloped, there was, there was no indication of that the house was draining stormwater onto it, no indication of the lot line and how their tiny lot, you can see their, their grass is green, and my neighbor and I are totally flooded, and that was winter, spring, summer, and fall. I was flooded like that. So that's one problem. And again, like that, her situation, the pre-built survey said, hey, something's going on there, and then that we can't find the as-built survey, we're waiting, hopefully Noak and Fraust has a copy. And so maybe that's something you, as the planning commission, could do, is do a final check, hey, was an as, what happens after it was built? Was everything good?
Yeah, that is not in our purview.
Okay, well then, then the city needs to check. Maybe you could talk with the city commissioners about that. There needs to be another check on that, for sure. And so maybe, I, I was hoping you would be giving a presentation today for us. Maybe you can get a, a group of residents together, we call us SHARCS, Stormwater-Harmed Adjacent Residents in the Community. Because then, like, the city commission sent people out to our houses, looked at her house, and they're like, no, nothing's wrong, but didn't dig into the file like we did. Or we're being told, we have to raise our grade, which hopefully that's something you could tell us, is that violation of 6-59? Because it says, no person shall change, modify, create, or establish the grade of any property within the city other than in conformity with this section. So I shouldn't have to raise my grade to protect myself from other people's water. And could you give us the reference to the Supreme Court decision about that? Because when I talk to Hank, he's like, well, if they've been giving you water for 10 years, I said, okay, so where's the law on that?
Sure, that's, yeah, that's actually what happened, and I think we...
Well, you have told us that, and we've been told to... Okay. But I mean, talk to the residents, we're told, oh, plan arborvitae, do I plan, I had six arborvitae and four of them died from the water in the back. So please talk with residents, and don't have Dan or Dwayne walk out and say, oh, the downspouts turned the right way, because guess what? It could be turned away from me, but it's still on a grade that it, it just is a short detour to the side before it comes down. So, please, and then, and then we find out, now I, like, when we heard tonight, well, this is pre-existing with that house, that looks like it sure is over the 50% rear lot coverage, we have people who, somebody puts in a, this is something that hopefully Mr. Zaluski can help us, if a resident puts in an impermeable structure without a permit, like a basketball court, and the neighbor's getting flooded, can the city do something about it?
We covered that previously, and we addressed that, because at this point, they can't walk into somebody's backyard.
Yeah, but if you...
The resident, the residents would have to report that to the city, and maybe allow them to come into your backyard, that is not what I understand.
Yeah, and what happens when they have reported it?
To visually see that, that...
Well, guess what? We have Google aerial maps. I mean, you can see it, and you could look in your BSA online and go, wait, that basketball court wasn't, there was no permit issued for that. I mean, it's pretty simple. And the aggrieved party, like he said, you can come in my, you can come in my yard with permission. I've had people come into my yard without permission from the city, and it's really easy to see where the downspouts are turned. You know, I've talked to a lot of residents, they don't really understand stormwater. So they, you know, when I say, well, where's your, where's your neighbor's garage's downspouts? And they're like, oh, I never even looked, you know? Because we get all confused about global warming and all this stuff, when it's a whole lot simpler than that. And that's why when I come to you guys, I encourage you to look on Google Maps Aerial View, and you see what happens is garages are getting pushed to the minimum setbacks, and why should any garage at the minimum setback be allowed to drop their downspouts in the back? And, and we should have a complaint procedure where if suddenly I'm getting a huge amount of water I never got before, look up, was there a new structure put up? Was there a new driveway poured? Did, go on, Google on that.
I believe there is a reporting structure, is there not?
No, it doesn't work very well, I can tell you that. This has been going on for...
That's, that's not the preview of this commission.
Four years, okay.
That, that enforcement is...
Before we go on to, I mean, you know, for using the examples, her downspouts face her back, her garage where all the water is too.
I, I have 20 feet behind my garage.
And it's filled with water.
And it didn't get crazy until the driveway went in. And we do have a rule that houses are supposed to drain onto impervious surfaces.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other public participation? Here are none, closed public participation. So I think, are we, are we asking you to maybe come up with ordinances that have that? Those pieces inside that, and maybe ones that are out and, or whatnot, or could that be a fair?
Yeah, it looks like we're particularly looking to look at other communities' ordinances, look at whatever sort of legal path there is to especially reflect new and emerging technologies, just basically do an inventory of what we have and, and see what maybe could be tweaked to some extent.
Let's go start going into that process.
Chair, just so that you're aware, again, there's no December meeting, so Matt wouldn't be expected to have anything to us until preparation for the January meeting. Matt, will that be okay with your schedule?
Yeah. All right, any other questions for Matt on this? Okay. We don't, we don't need a boat on that.
Well, no, not for that, we're just, this is disdirection for the city attorney. There was a discussion, it wasn't done.
So, agenda number eight, matter of public hearing, landscape features.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, I was going to write a memo for this, but Matt did such an eloquent job, I put his in. So, basically what we're looking at is the final resolution in the final vote, we're looking for a recommendation to the planning, from the planning commission to the city commission for adoption of the landscape features, zoning ordinance amendment, and I'll let Matt explain this.
Yeah, thank you, Hank. So I, I took the feedback from several meetings ago and incorporated it into this. Particularly, one of the big themes that came out of the last meeting on this ordinance was a concern about the, the non-permanent residential landscape features. So initially, we brought this ordinance forward to try to, to solve an issue of, of the permanent landscape features, where they, they're at, and how many there can be. And then there was some concern expressed, well, what about people who maybe kind of do an end run around that and have what's basically a permanent feature but in a temporary type of setting? So I, I've tried to capture that in adding a non-permanent residential landscape features definition and regulations to this proposed ordinance that, you know, more or less would mirror the regulations of, of the permanent structure. We also adjusted the setback, because there were some, kind of some conflicting setbacks that were provided for, to the extent we were blending this into the same framework as the accessory structures ordinance, and so we reconciled that. I think the one thing that I would point out in terms of the non-permanent landscape features, if the commission does want to continue going down the path of including that in the ordinance, number one, am I on the right track here, are Hank and I on the right track here as to how we, we structured this? Is it capturing what you were thinking of in terms of what those limitations would look like? And then, you know, not to, to gum up the works too much, but as I was trying to define a non-permanent landscape feature, boy, there's a lot of things that could qualify as that. I mean, up to and including seasonal decor. So, you know, I think we need to be clear, if we are going to pursue regulation of non-permanent landscape features, then make sure we're comfortable with the definition.
Questions? So at this point, we're, this, we're reviewing this to recommend to this city.
Right, your motion is not to adopt, you're recommending body to the city commission. So what your motion would be is to recommend this as written to the city commission for adoption from the planning commission. Having said that, the city commission still has an opportunity to amend this. So this is not just because this is proffered here and this is moved forward to the city commission, doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be the final form that this takes, but at least at this point in time, we believe that we've captured the spirit of what the planning commission was looking for going forward on this.
So you bring up an interesting thing, I don't know if I really fully thought that out, but I mean, you know, I think of Halloween, right? And there are some folks in our neighborhood, and I won't mention them, but they, they go all out, and their gardens are shot full of Halloween decorations. So with, how would that, in your opinion...
That's kind of what I'm pointing out here, that I think there could be unintended consequences, even with something as simple as, as typical seasonal flower pots. You get a very tasteful flower bed with, with a number of, of flower pots and such that aren't implicating the concerns that, say, the permanent landscape feature ordinance is trying to solve. Because those, those things are there, they're potentially in setbacks and whatnot, but I, I also empathize with the concern that somebody may place non-permanent landscape features in a way that creates the same issue as the permanent ones. But yeah, defining it is, is tough.
So, thinking of like that seasonal example, thinking of like a yard full of statues for Halloween, um, do we, do we skirt the issue if there's no, like, limit to the number of? So, like we say, like, I'm just looking at, like, where the, the limitations are, right? We talk about if we place, like, non-permanent, we place in any yard, shall not be included in calculation of lot or yard coverage, shall not be located within dedicated basement or right-of-way, you would expect that of seasonal decorations as well, right? You can't put your inflatable between the sidewalk and the street. Then we have a limitation on the number, and then we say, can't be closer than three feet from the side lot line or five feet from the driveway, which would be an issue you'd have with your neighbor, if you abutted your neighbor's driveway, they'd want people to get in and out of that driveway. And then number six is the, the sixth item is the limitation to an area... And then number six is, the sixth item is the limitation to an area of three feet by three feet and eight to two feet. So, let's say hypothetically, we didn't have items four or six on that list, then we wouldn't necessarily impact someone's seasonal decorating.
I think that would be one way of going about it. Keep in mind, where we're coming from is that we're not regulating these right now. So, that's kind of the default at the moment. And it could be the number and/or size that would be the better way to go. But I don't want to be writing ordinances, including a definition referencing seasonal decorations or holiday decorations, because now we're getting into First Amendment territory, so we don't want to go there. But that, that could be an option, if the commission is comfortable with that. If your, if your, your main concern is the setbacks and the effect on neighbors or in the right-of-way, then, then it is possible to scale it back to those items.
What if we put a timeframe on it? Can't have a structure greater than 100 days. That gets you out of all your holiday activities.
The problem then, how do you time it? Because now you're going to have to create a permitting structure, and that's, it's the same issue with temporary signs.
You could time it with a complaint.
You know, a lot of, a lot of
Time it with something else.
Communities have moved away from regulating temporary signs by, by a time period, because there's no way of really tracking them in a way that isn't related to an event.
I'd just be fearful to not have this in there. I think I was the one that included it, or wanted it in there, only because I see neighbors, they put up three, four, five, six, seven, unlimited, like you said, it's not structurally bound to the ground, doesn't count. Are we prepared to have a community of flower pots?
I've seen front lawns that have been transformed into big planting beds that are growing
Wild gardens?
No, not wild gardens, vegetables or whatever else, you know, wood
But those, those would be considered permanent.
Right, because they're
Per the definition.
Well, then if they're considered permanent, then once the ordinance goes in, they're in violation of it. Or I'm really going to say that they are, or they are going to be legally non-conforming.
That's what they have something to do with.
Because there are a lot of them. You know, it's a difference to have a raised bed, and then another thing to have your whole front lawn turned into beds.
Just, just one thing to throw out there, right to farm.
That's, that's its own thing.
What, do I dare ask?
Yeah, I, quite, to the extent, I'll be honest, I haven't gone down that rabbit hole with respect to this ordinance. So that's, that'd be an interesting research project, but now the idea
I don't know that we want to necessarily go there on this ordinance.
Yeah, the idea that if you start regulating
Everything.
Gardening, vegetable gardening, you could bump into some, you know, the law that provides a right to that, that you can't regulate or you can only regulate in certain ways. That's something you encounter every day in a community like this, but
Matt, am I reading between the lines that your recommendation would be to, for us to eliminate that section of the non-permanent residential structures because of the, how broad and undefined it can be?
Are you asking if I'm recommending you just completely doing away with regulating?
Correct. And just keeping the permanent
I'm not sure I'm necessarily recommending that. I think maybe the middle ground path of where we, we keep it focused more on the setbacks and the neighbor-adjacent type issues might make sense. But, but I am nervous about the way of defining it and it potentially becoming cumbersome.
Mr. Chair, if I could just throw something out there. What about the, and I know that when Brandon was concerned about timeframes and that, what if certain things that are related to decorations for, like, holidays, and are limited to 30 days either way of the holiday? Like, let's just say, or, that may not be enough time, that may not be possible.
Yeah, again, we're getting into First Amendment territory.
I think we got
And it's looking like, like a sign ordinance, and I just don't want to go to that. It's almost like a content neutral, or content-based regulation.
So for clarification, nothing like that has really been
No, I don't like it.
Thank you.
And this came, I mean, this came to us, we started discussing this, thinking about, you know, the way in which residents are impacted today. And I know there was an, an issue that came up where someone, it was the issue of a setback from a neighbor's driveway. So not that they needed a setback from their own driveway, it's like, I feel like, oh, I'm happy to open up my car door into my own planter box, but where it impacts relationships between neighbors. And so I think that that is one of the nice things about the non-resident, the non-permanent residential landscape features, is it helps to define that for people and to create some physical space where, where it would, you know, otherwise somebody could obstruct their neighbor, and then this makes it an ordinance issue to be resolved, as opposed to, like, an interpersonal issue. At, like, have we, I guess, all, to say, like, have we heard from residents in the city about, like, number of non-residential, non-permanent residential landscape? Have we had complaints, or have issues come to the city about, like, number of these non-permanent features? Like, where this is something that we feel like is going to be something that we need to regulate the number of? Or has it been more tied to things like calculation of lot or yard coverage, easement or right-of-way, distance from side lot line, driveway, et cetera?
A lot of what we've had with this, where people call in or go say something about it, is, this person has 50 signs on their lawn, this person has 80 ducks on their lawn, this person has all these, you know? So the impetus in doing that is, or at least exploring what they're talking about, is driven by residents, whether it's phone calls, notes, emails, walk-in the front, that's, that's kind of what this is all driven by. We typically here are, basically operate on a complaint, on a complaint basis for this, or anything like that. Because we have one guy that's part-time, that goes out, and he's not looking in people's backyards, and he's looking for things that are readily available, garbage on the streets, things like that. So for him to do this, we'd have to have something for him to enforce. So is it a number? Okay, if it's a number, do I want to regulate the number of gnomes that people can have in their garden? Not particularly, but there, there either is, or there is not, a permanent or non-permanent residential landscape feature. So, once you decide what that is, that's what we're going to live with. And again, that's just to point out, as the ordinances are a living, breathing thing, I don't know an ordinance that's perfect from the start that ends up the same way as it does 20 years down the line. Ordinances progress, people change, looks change, needs change, attitudes change, communities change. So that, that would be the extent on, you know, what this would be. And I don't know how, we either kind of proceed with this or something like this, or I'm not sure that we go down that road at all. And then the problem that you have with that is, is that what do you do with that? Do you call that light? So, I mean, in the interest in this, this is why, you know, we came up with this, and it's, it's what's offered before you here tonight, if you want to make changes to it, we certainly can still do that. If not, you can send it on to the city commission with the recommendation.
I do like adding the parameters you mentioned. I think that does make sense. To this definition, from the permit definition.
Questions or comments?
Mine's non-substantive, but
Okay.
We define it as landscape features, permanent residential. And then we talk about permanent residential landscape features. So section two, then to section three. It's supposed to be
Oh, yeah.
So the bold is different than the, you see
Yeah, I can see that being tweaked, that makes sense.
Well, it's supposed to be the defined term, right?
Right, exactly.
Okay. We use capitalization for, like, defined terms.
Like, all caps?
Not all caps, we just, like, capitalize every word if it's a defined term.
I think that's pretty much, yeah. It's, well, you know, I noticed, it was funny, when we did the yard ordinance, the corner lot, I noticed that front was always capitalized and yard was lowercase, and I, it was, everything in me wanted to capitalize, front and yard, but that's how.
That's how
So, yeah, normally, normally you would have the full defined terms capitalized.
As long as it's consistent.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll open it up to your public participation.
On this topic?
On this topic only. And we'll close public participation. So, do we want to make a motion with the recommendations that we're proposing?
I will, I'm going to make a motion with the planning commission. To send this to the city commission, would that be an appropriate motion?
Yes. To recommend this to the city commission.
I make a motion to recommend this to the city commission with the modification of removing B. four and B. six.
Of section forty
Of section forty-six dot, or five, landscape features in residential districts, which would allow for seasonal decorations.
Second?
Second.
All of those in favor? Close? Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we open up the public participation. We'll limit the comments to three minutes.
Okay, so I think I showed you guys at a previous meeting, I FOIA'd everything that the city has done on these three topics related to stormwater from the master plan, and I got this thick stack that I had to sort through, site approvals, Big B Coffee, and I could not find a report on what was done, even though Hank had said something after a resident said, are you going to do anything with this master plan? He said, yeah, we'll have a report at the end of each year. So you do have, forty-eight is your high priority, so I hope you'll be coming up with what that certain threshold of square footage is. This has been a high priority since at least, I found it on your priority list, April 28th of this year, so we're how many months out now? And also figure out what the first flush is going to be. And then also, I'd encourage you, if you're going to look at thirteen, sustainability, require residential properties to redirect all downspouts to vegetated areas, blah, 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 but not to impervious surfaces and not to adjacent properties. I'd encourage you to make that more in line with six, six-59, because we keep talking about which way the downspouts are turned. If you saw the crazy pictures of the flooding in my backyard, the guy took his downspouts from directly to us, just turned it sideways. So again, it just, so again, the six-59, section A, says, "The grade shall not exceed the grade of adjoining properties at the lot line, nor shall the flow of surface water be directed toward or permitted to flow." So it's not just the way it's directed, it's permitted to flow, or project unnecessarily or unfairly upon adjacent properties. And again, I encourage you to incorporate number twelve, as long as you're taking stormwater seriously, there's three related to stormwater, forty-eight, thirteen, and twelve. You have forty-eight as high priority as of this year, and thirteen is medium, and twelve hasn't been included. And we're talking about personal management versus going to prohibited connections, or, or encouraging your neighbor to raise their grade, or put in an expensive, I've met people who paid $10,000 to put in a
Mr. Chair, this is
Yeah, French drain.
This is supposed to be something that, for items that were not on the agenda.
Okay, well, this is, this is, we're coming to the end of the year, and you guys have had these things on your priority list, so
They're like, right about that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll look forward to hearing some reports on, on your priority list.
Thank you. Any other public participation? All right, we'll close public participation. And entertain a motion to
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second? All of those in favor?
Thanks.
Thank you.